Oh, that's headphones.
Okay, it is five thirty-two. Okay. So I will call the special meeting of the Milpitas City Council of May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five to order. While this meeting is being broadcast via Zoom, oral public comments may only be provided live at the city council meeting in person. The city council is available for instant translation in over fifty languages with worthy accessible via mobile phone, computer and video displays by scanning the QR code located on the title page of this agenda on the upper right-hand corner. So back to today's agenda, today's business, city clerk, set up, please take the roll call.
Vice Mayor Barbara Deal.
Here.
Councilmember Chua. You're on.
Here.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yeah.
Councilmember Leanne.
Oops.
Here.
Mayor Montana.
Mayor here.
And I am here, thank you. So now let's rise for the pledge of allegiance. Is it a big one or a whole tier?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty as its own.
Thank you, everyone. So now, uh, public forum. Let's move on to the public forum. Members of the public are invited to speak on any item that is on the agenda. Please note that all public comment may only be provided live at the Milpitas City Council meeting in person. Public forum will be limited to two minutes. Call speakers, city clerk, for anybody that.
Uh, I do not have any public speaker cards. If anyone would like to address the city council, we have our public speaking over here in the corner next to our chief of police.
Okay, so is there anybody from the public behind me that wants to speak? Okay. Okay, so, uh, moving on to the announcement of conflict of interest and campaign contributions.
Thank you, mayor. I asked the mayor and each council member whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda.
Vice Mayor Barbara Deal.
None.
Councilmember Chua.
None.
Councilmember Lamb.
None.
Councilmember Leanne.
None.
Mayor Montana.
And I'm none.
I further ask the mayor and each member of the council to please disclose any campaign contributions of one hundred dollars or more received within the last twelve months from the parties entering into contract with the city on tonight's agenda, or contributions received from development project applicants to development projects on tonight's agenda.
Vice Mayor Barbara Deal.
None.
Councilmember Chua.
None.
Councilmember Lamb.
None.
Councilmember Leanne.
None.
Mayor Montana.
I'm none.
Thank you, mayor. Let the record reflect no report conflicts. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So now we will be reading the code of conduct, and we have vice mayor that will respectfully lead it.
Thank you, mayor. The Milpitas City Council Code of Conduct: Be respectful and courteous, model civility, avoid surprises, praise publicly and criticize privately, focus on the issue and not the person, refrain from using electronic devices while on the council days, disclose conflicts of interest and affiliations related to the agenda items, separate governing from campaigning, the council speaks with one voice after making policy on issues, respect the line between policy and administration, and council will hold one another accountable to comply with its code of conduct.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. So now moving on to the approval of the agenda. So does anyone have any changes to make? Uh, city manager staff, anybody? Okay, and none from the city council, so I need a motion in a second. So moved by, uh, councilmember Chua. Seconded by councilmember Leanne. Okay, so now we'll call for those.
Vice Mayor Barbara Deal.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Mayor Montana.
And I am an aye. Okay, agenda items, uh, city manager.
I just wanted to start by turning my microphone on. Thank you, thank you. Good evening. I just wanted to start by a couple of remarks that set the context for today and just review the agenda very briefly. But first and foremost, I want to thank the city council for setting a tough challenge to our city team and for the team who has met the challenge and reads before you a very solid proposal from my perspective. While we have the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six proposed operating budget that is proposed balance with ongoing dollars with minimal impact to, um, service reductions, in fact, no service impacts, and some positions that are duly vacant right now for purposes for lack of revenue or for inability to fill, it is, it is a solid budget from that perspective. However, the real challenge rate that we have before us is the five-year structural budget deficit. And so I'd like to spend a little bit more time as we talk that through because you'll see that we do have a plan in place for that as well. And there's where the real work begins and the real challenge begins. But I'm excited with the work that we've accomplished within a matter of weeks. I'm excited with the fact that we have a plan. We have a problem, but we have a plan, which is the best case scenario that we could be in. And we have time to plan ahead and to conduct the work that needs to be done. So with that, let's go to the agenda. Next slide. So we have the, we'll review today the proposed operating budget. We'll review the general fund proposed deficit and reduction plan. And included in that will be a walk-through of the deficit reduction summary and as well as detail around council priority areas for where the proposed reductions are, as well as new proposals. And I want to touch very quickly on the new proposals because they're very prudent for this organization. They revolve around insurance, technology, as well as an investment in stabilizing revenue, as well as an investment in working to make this organization more efficient, as well as the, we'll provide a general fund forecast. We'll also review the framework in a little greater detail and particularly the city council prioritized referrals, and then we'll answer any questions that you have. And we do seek to move forward on June third with the input that you provide. In terms of schedule, how this will work is we'll present the proposed operating budget. We'll also, next week, we'll have the council prioritize proposals and referrals that have dollars assigned so that we could build those into the June third budget and ask for the council to consider approval. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Luz.
Thank you, Luz. Good evening, Luz. Go first, you have finance director for the city of Milpitas. I don't know why I always have to remember my title is, but apparently I do. Last Tuesday was my first year anniversary with Milpitas, so thank you for allowing me to stay. I appreciate that. I also want to thank everybody who's sitting around this table. We stand, and also the people whose shoulders we stand on and are behind you to help put together this budget. This budget is a collaborative effect, effort from all directors and staff and everybody who sits before you. I also want to thank the council for coming to us during the briefings with a clear head and very clear guidance and telling us what to do and how to do it well and really frankly preparing us for today. So we do appreciate everything that you do for us, and we thank you for your guidance. With that, we're going to start with something that you've seen before. This is the original product that you saw back on February eighteenth, and it demonstrated a three-point-one million-dollar shortfall in FY twenty-five, twenty-six. And then going through the years, that shortfall resulted in a twenty-eight-point-five million-dollar out five years, a structural deficit. So with that, just going to let that percolate a little bit, and then we are going to go on to the next because better, better news is ahead of us. These, once again, were sort of the things when people were proffering reductions, they were looking at three buckets for the programs they were putting forward and the offerings they were putting forward as far as reductions were concerned. Were they essential? Were they core or they baseline programs? And so this was really sort of a guiding guidelines for folks when they were reviewing what they could and could not give up. Once again, with the idea of not reducing levels of service in the organization, this really was a guide for much of this. And actually, as you will see when we get to the final product, you will really see how well it guided us. So next slide. So here we are. I'm not going to go back to, we started February eighteenth, we came back April second, and this is the results of all the discussions and those two particular study sessions. And so we came back on the left-hand side, we now have one-time reductions and/or increases in funding. On the right-hand side, we have recurring. So the first four on the left-hand side are revenue changes that are one-time. We have additional money in the educational revenue augmentation fund. That's, that was something we found out after February eighteenth, as I told you last time, April second. The transit occupancy hotel tax, that's for those who come to visit our beautiful city, that is slightly reduced. Our property tax and our sales tax estimates both came much, much better pictures. In fact, we've got really good presentations on the, on April first by both our property tax expert and our sales tax expert that really sort of established why we had those in one-time, once again, but unusual increases for revenue in those areas. And then we have a small amount of money. There's a arrow next to it. You'll see why there's a arrow next to it on the next page. But that represents some one-time reductions, and that's a one-time reduction. We'll go into more detail on the next page. On the right-hand side, we have recurring. Recurring costs are costs that not only are reductions that are costs that are happening in the current year, but into the future. And so what then happens is that, that is the area where if we do a good job of looking at reducing recurring costs, we will reduce the structural deficit, and you will see how that works in two slides from now. So that totaled, that totals up to, um, I'm sorry, I forgot my glasses. All right, that totals up to one-point-seven in, in one-time funds and then recurring two-point-five. Add those two together, you subtract the three-point-one deficit, and we actually come up with a surplus in twenty-five, twenty-six. So remember those two numbers that I pointed to the last time? This is the detail. And I'll start from the top. As you can see, we also got clear direction from you on April second to really reduce the amount of reductions that we had that affected the community. As you can see, nothing here is affecting that council, that council priority area. So we were very clear about that. We were very deliberate about that. Once again, congratulations to the directors and the office leaders who came back to the table with really good proffers as far as reductions are concerned. So starting at the top, and I'm going to do a little bit of jumping around because some of these are related to each other. So starting at the top, we have a buildings inspector reduction that is a vacant position. It has been difficult to place. We also have reduced development activity. That position is paid for through development activity. And we've had, frankly, a development activity has not been up to, has not, has not proved to be as fruitful as we would like, and so we've had reduced activity in the area. So that also comes in partnership with a reduction that you will see on the public safety side, which is the fire prevention inspection. Those two folks work in tandem, one inspects the building, the other inspects the building for fire compliance. Once again, both have, both dependent on development activity. Those activities we're able to cover with current staff. Once again, that position has also been vacant for quite a while, the fire position as well. So both positions are vacant. We are defunding those positions. Those positions will come back if we have sufficient development activity to support the cost of the position. Going back up to economic development and job growth, that's council priority. We're looking at economic development. This is the special projects person. This is just a reduction of a part-time staffer that we were going to reduce anyway. Those, those responsibilities will be given to others. The international trade and commerce program, it's a small program. Given the difficulties that we're having, the federal challenges that we're having, the sort of, we don't know what's going to happen in the international marketplace, and ten thousand dollars isn't going to make a difference, so we took that reduction as well. And then finally, the storefront improvement grant, that does not decimate the program. They have about three-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars in that grant program, if I remember right. And this fifty thousand dollars is slightly reducing that program, and we're going to be looking at that program and see how well it works and to see what else we can do with it. Moving to governance administration, the city manager, this is legislative support. This is the lobbying effort that we have for the federal and state lobbyists that we put on board. We can actually do a lot of that through our already existing memberships. There are government officer, federal finance officers association, which is tremendously active in this arena. For example, we got really good news as a municipal, potential municipal, certainly a municipal bond now, bonding organization now, and for any future municipal bonds that we issue. The tax exemption for municipalities is still in pace. It is not in the Republican tax plan. That's tremendous. It's very arcane. A lot of people don't care, but if you're in finance, especially municipal finance, you really care. That saves about a hundred basis points to anybody who borrows. So it makes us much more attractive as a municipality when we go out to the market, that basically people buy are, are, are getting good, good return on their money, on their investment with us. Finance, this is a cost allocation expenditure efficiencies. We'll get in more into this in a little bit of more detail when Deanna speaks a little bit more about the fiscal framework. But effectively, this is organizational hygiene. What do we want to call it? Essentially, what we did was examine, and I have to do a shout-out to Alice because Alice really did some looking at the cushions and essentially looked at programs that we had that we were charging to the general fund, but really what should have been charged to other funds. So for example, you see that same effect a little bit lower down in neighborhood and housing. These efforts are being, the base efforts for these are being performed by other funds, for example, housing or CIP. Those monies, those expenses were still living in the general fund, and that's not where they should be. They have to be. Those additional indirect costs have to be where the work is being done. And so that's why we moved that million dollars. Public Works, the day porter service, that was not a successful program. And essentially, it's where we may not see the place as spotless as it is, but we still bring people in on an emergency basis to basically take care of things. But that has not been, that, my understanding is it's been traditionally hard to hire in that program. Moving over to public safety, once again, we've already talked about the fire prevention inspector, miscellaneous expenses. Thank you. Jason, you looked in the cushions as well. We found seventy-seven thousand and an office assistant with a little bit of reduced hours. And then finally, the police officer vacant. If you notice, that's the only one that's under essential, and I really want to go into a little bit of detail when we talk about that. And Chief Jared is here that can also speak to you if you want more detail. But effectively, we have challenges in hiring and recruiting for our police department. It's ongoing. This is not unusual. This is not just with Milpitas. Frankly, it's a national challenge. And so if this, this defunding reflects reality, because you simply won't be able to recruit in this year for that position. So we are once again just freezing that position for the year when you stand that it's essential. And it will, it will, once we get to recruiting that position, we'll come and bring that position back for consideration. On the bottom left, there is a summary of the areas that we're thinking about categorizing these things are as far as fiscal strategy is concerned. Capacity constraints, that reflects the police officer. We just don't have the capacity to do that recruitment. Cost allocation, that reflects the cost allocation, cost efficiencies. Economic alternative, this is the legislative support. We have different memberships with which we can lobby and through which we can lobby. And frankly, that's much more effective because we're lobbying as a group, and we're bringing that forward as a larger group. We have expenditure efficiency. I've already gone through that. Oops, pulled that out twice and put that together. And then reduced economic activity, that is the building inspector and the fire inspector. So we're trying to sort of categorize, categorize these so it's easy to understand rather than the individual lines. So next page, what does that result in? So starting from the top, that's just a shortened version of what you saw a couple of pages ago. So we have the first green line is FY twenty-five, twenty-six reduction proposals. You can see the one-time expense that was on the prior page. And then you can also see the recurring expense, and you can see the effectively recurring expense, how it waterfalls through the remainder of the five years. So that totals four-point-three in FY twenty-five, twenty-six. You take the three-point-one and you wind up under the recalculated surplus deficit, a one-point-two surplus, which is very good news. Once again, I have to commend everybody here.
That's great. Thank you for that.
Yeah. I thank everybody in this room, please. That results in a change of twenty-eight-point-five to fourteen-point-eight as far as a five-year structural deficit is concerned. That's a forty-eight percent reduction. I'm going to let that sit for a little bit.
Wasn't it higher before? Earlier, it was twenty-eight point five the last time you said, but with the reductions, we get, we get credit year to year. So it brings the twenty-eight-point-five million. Luz refers to it as it waterfalls throughout, but every year you get credit for removing that amount from ongoing expenses since they're permanently removed. And so it lowers it down to fourteen-point-eight over five years. However, what's missing are items that are needed. So the next part of the, these PowerPoint presentation will include a very prudent set of requests that we're making, both one-time and ongoing.
So that's why it's important to address the issue now before, instead of just kicking the can down the road.
Yes, yes.
Yes, so that makes a huge difference. That's great.
That's what made the difference, is being focused on ongoing.
Yeah.
Did you speak twenty-something, wasn't it? It was twenty-eight.
It's twenty-eight, but.
Yeah. But what made the difference is the, as I mentioned, the council's challenge to focus on ongoing and be very prudent with one time.
I just want, oh, thank you, staff, for all your hard work.
The reason why we reduced this, right? Correct me if I'm wrong. Because we were using the general fund instead of evening it up to the different projects, is that correct? The, the main bucket of, the main bucket of reductions lives in what we're calling cost allocation and efficiencies. And what, what we're finding, and we then kind of have been referring that informally as just housekeeping. It's looking at overhead rates, central services, and cost allocation is for positions that are eligible to charge off somewhere, such as the housing example, where it can be covered and it's eligible to be covered, it should be covered by the housing funds instead of by the general fund. So once we, we took the low-hanging fruit in order to see how far we could get, but there is a lot of work streams now that we want to go through to see what more dollars we can assemble. Those would be ongoing dollars. The expense is still there. It's, but, but it's now allocated to someplace else. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes. We're charging the appropriate overhead rates.
Right, so we didn't really do anything except.
Unburden the general fund.
Unburden the general fund, yes, but the expense still there. That's the bottom line.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I, and Alice and I were talking right before the meeting. There are other opportunities where we can review and create diligent efforts to see if we can unburden the general fund even more. It's just housekeeping around cost allocation.
Exactly. Unburdening the general fund is, you know, and transferring it to someplace else is still safe, the way I see it. To really unburden the general fund is to reduce the real expense that came out of the, that comes out of the general fund. That is my bottom line. You see what I'm saying?
We'll, we'll get there when we go through the fiscal strategy to show how, how it bleeds together. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Councilmember Lamb.
Yeah, um, can you explain, um, on the recurring expense? Let's go year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six is two-point-five, and how do you go to three-point-one next year? And three-point-two to following few years?
Thank you, councilmember Alice, for the budget management. That would be because of the cost of the position. So as part of the forecast, we assume an increase in the positions for step increases or cost of living increases. We assume those costs in there. cost of living increases, we assume those costs in there. And if we eliminate the position and we cut the position, then those increases would also be eliminated in the future years. So that's why it would go up in the future years because we assume the cost is going up those years, and when we take that cost away, we would have more savings.
It's the same amount of cost you calculate on page three, like, on page three, the revenues. Is that the same amount of percentage you calculate and then you just deduct the same percentage?
So it's, it's what we put into the expense side, so the revenues are going to be separate from this. This would be on the expense side, so the salaries and benefits that we assume for the positions. So for example, the, the building inspector, the fire prevention inspector and the police officer, since we are taking those positions out of the budget in twenty five, twenty six and the out years at this point in time. All the costs associated with that would include all of your benefits, retirement, and then any cost of living increase or step increase that would have been assumed. Those costs are also limited in the future years.
Is that it? We have another question. Could you want us to wait till the end of the presentation or ask questions then, is it okay?
At your pleasure.
If I understand correctly, the revenue that you projected in the future years is from several buckets. Right? The ones, yeah.
Yes.
If I understand correctly, the revenue you projected on the next four years are from five buckets. And you got increase on the number because you anticipate those revenues will come in higher.
So the five buckets of which you speak are the property tax, the sales tax, franchise, fees and TOT, which is transit. Occupant, I know, I always forget, occupancy, I'll never get it, I'll quit municipal service and then I'll know it. Yeah, TOT, so those are the five major buckets for an organization like the City of Nopitas.
What's important to mention is we are meeting with third-party experts in terms of the forecasting and sourcing and looking at trend information, so this is not just us making, you know, some guesses. We are getting information who are assisting us and who help the state of California, the cities within the state of California with the same type of financial projections.
Right, so go, you, to refresh your memory, just the property tax and sales tax presentations that were given you on April first were pretty thorough and they're pretty good, but we can always, at your pleasure, bring them back. But effectively, it does give you more information on what growth, the growth patterns are. And they tend to be conservative. Thank you.
So now we have a vice mayor.
Yeah, just two questions for now. So what do you mean by structural deficit? We've been talking about structural deficit, I do understand it, but for the purpose of, you know, informing the public, what are we dealing here?
Alice is very eloquent with that, I'll let her answer.
I'll try. So structural deficit is a deficit that we have this year. And then if we don't fix that deficit, it carries over with ongoing savings, carries over onto the next year. And so then it adds on to that next year, and assuming that you don't fix it that next year with ongoing funds, it just continues to add on to each other.
It's spending money you don't have, it's overspending.
Okay, okay.
Deficit spending? That's another way of saying it.
Okay, the second question may be trivial. If you look at the revenues projected in the next five years, which councilmember Lamb had inquired about. By any chance, would that include anticipated Rivian revenues?
Unfortunately, no. We don't count money we don't have.
Okay, because I've heard Rivian several times, good to know.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Continue, thank you. I think we're, unless there are any more questions on this slide, we'll continue. Hang on a second, this is, let me put on my glasses. Okay, so these are the FY twenty five, twenty six new proposals. And these are, just as a general, just as a general thought. We spent a lot of time thinking about what proposals we were putting in front of you. This does not reflect anywhere near what was put in front of us. Once again, the directors and office, and the heads of office were very thoughtful about the proposals they put forward, but even then, we looked at them very, very closely, always to the eye of looking at what is one-time, a one-time investment versus anything that would be recurring. So I'm going to start from the top again. And now we're back to investing in the community and wellness and open space. The first three, the first one, mini circle storage, it least appears in three different places because it really has three different functions. That is a leasing of two buildings behind the police, behind the police, the police department. And what it is, is a shared space for storage of large evidence for the PD, for some overflow of equipment for the public works and the consolidation of storage for recreational, recreation. And that storage has been spread all over the place, so we decided to put that together. We're also losing the building that the evidence is going to be in, I think, a year and a half, that the police evidence is stored, so we needed. We found this opportunity, it was convenient, it's behind the police office, so it's a pretty good place to put it, and we have it at a pretty good rate. You've already approved this, there was action taken a couple of months ago on this, so this is just funding it for future years. Then.
I have a question.
Of course, ma'am.
So on the swim lessons, why, why do we have a deficit on it?
Because it is a net, the negative in this particular case represents revenue. So the expenses are like ninety two, the revenue is about ninety two hundred and the expenses are the difference is about three. Renee can give you much more information, but these are adult swim lessons that apparently there's just a big surge of people wanting that. Renee, do you want to talk about it a little bit more?
I think she's asking a more basic question. The positive numbers are expenses, so we're reflecting them just in positives. The negative numbers are what's generated by revenue. So it's actually counterintuitive, right? We could have done the expenditures in red because it's going to draw down or increase the deficit, but that's how we present.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Mobile stage rental, we have a number of events, as everyone knows, we have a broken mobile stage at this point. It's about four thousand dollar per event to rent a stage. So that's like the concerts, July fourth, things like that, so we're renting a mobile stage for that purpose. Private swim lessons, we've just gone over. The recreation administrative assistance, these are the people at the front desk here. And what that does is enable to the full-time staff to attend to folks who are using our sports facilities. And so those folks can man the front office, the front office and the onboarding and entry of people and of customers, of clients and community, and community users while our staff attend and do program, programmatic work. Storage tank condition assessment, that is a best practice. I get to use my favorite phrase, one of my favorite phrases, which is a state of good repair. We have about twenty seven storage tanks for diesel fuel, they're located all, all over the city. They are fifteen to thirty years old, they need an inspection. But the fruit of this may very well be a CIP program or CIP ask in the next couple of years if we need to repair anything. But effectively, this is to hire an external consultant to do that inspection of those twenty seven tanks.
So don't you, don't they regularly inspect those for leakage and so forth?
A Christian.
We, we inspect them only when we're aware of a leakage. And recently, we had a leakage on a fuel line, so we did a condition. Mind you, they're, they're underground, so the inspection is somewhat invasive and it requires staff and equipment that we don't possess. What we're looking to do is be proactive with our sort of reconnaissance of these assets so that they don't cause us additional problems. If the diesel tanks were to leak into the soil, we would have legacy contaminants and VOC release issues and potentially subject us to third-party lawsuits or expensive mitigation efforts. So there will invariably be a CIP as a result of this.
It's good to be proactive and I understand the state will also find us, so, great, thank you for that.
Okay, moving on to governance and administration. This is the business tax modernization. I'm going to come back to these next two items because those are going to probably have engender more discussion. So I'm going to defer business tax modernization and enhance revenue strategy for right now, we'll come back at the end of the slide. The enhanced, the internship program is someone to support the office of the city attorney. This is a person who did, who comes in and does great work, they are from Berkeley this year. My understanding is, we regret that, for me, and the representatives from USC regret that, but there you go. But anyway, so that, that person, that help is actually incredible. I can't speak to you enough, the person who did work last year was absolutely fabulous. So it's quite helpful to just do a lot of, I think this year they're doing some help in the housing program, if my understanding is right, that's their assignment. Following on, we've already talked about mini circle, the technology systems, you have a memo in your hands regarding what these systems are. I'm not going to go into detail on that, those are essentially to support our technology systems on an ongoing basis. Incident and disaster management software, this is a three, soft pieces of software, three apps that help us with these incidents in the public safety arena. And then finally, here we have miscellaneous insurance. Every so often is to defer a risk or to be able to lay off risk to outside institutions. As necessary, we will parse out areas that we believe that we should be carrying more outside insurance, so that was his decision here. And then let's go back, unless there, I'm going to stop here and ask if there are any questions on those.
I have one question on the technology systems, is that for the new computers or is that for the, you know, like those firewalls?
The, yeah, these are existing systems, and actually, these costs were being covered in the CIP, in the capital improvement program for a number of years. These are not appropriate to be in that fund, so this is actually reversal of what we were talking about before. They are living in the capital fund, it's ongoing programs. And so we are actually moving the expense to where it belongs, which is on the operating side on the general fund.
Great, great, thank you.
If you don't have any other questions, yes?
Anybody else?
We have a council member, Leon. There are two mini circle, mini circle storage, we lease. What's the difference between the two? There was a top one with ten thousand dollars and the other one is ninety four thousand dollars.
It's actually three, it's three of them, and the reason they're different is because.
And another one with ten thousand.
Yeah, because they're all under different, I couldn't figure out a way to put them together, they're all under different priorities as far as the council is concerned. The community wellness one, which is the ten thousand, three twenty, that is for recreational services. That's their equipment that's in various different storage houses across the city, we've consolidated those into one place. The governance and, the governance and administration one, that is the public works. That's the spare equipment that they have. And then public safety, that is the evidence, the large evidence that is being currently in a building that's set to be, I don't know if the building is going to be demolished, it is going to be demolished. The building is going to be demolished in a year and a half, we have to find space. We took this opportunity early rather than waiting until we were closer to that demolishing because that building, the rental space is fantastic because it's right behind the police officer, the police building right now. So it's a very convenient place, actually, you have access through a gate if I remember right, so it's pretty cool.
Yeah, I know that.
Yeah, so it's two buildings, two separate buildings, police I think have one and, and public works and recreation serve the other, share the other space. It's a good use of lease funds. And it's consolidating, it's consolidating all in plus one place. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Lamb, do you have any questions, as I see your. Really? I'm on in on something.
Okay, so you can continue. Let's talk a little bit about the business tax modernization. Matt, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure, thank you, Luz. And so as part of our fiscal strategy that you'll hear about a little later from, from Deanna, it's important that we identify through a ballot measure strategy, additional revenue that we can bring into the city. Is my mic sound okay? Yeah, it sounds different. Additional revenue that we could bring into the city. And we received direction by council as part of the prioritization process in January to start exploring a business tax license, modernization. And so we're starting that effort right now, we'll be back in front of council in August or September, possibly October, but in the fall with an analysis that we'll share with you options. We could look at changing our business tax to be more based on gross square footage or we can keep the number of employees, but either way, we don't collect very much in business tax compared to our counterparts. And modernizing our business tax is a good way to look at additional revenue ongoing for the city to help address our structural deficit. This is a one-time cost, this is very similar to the costs that we incurred last year when we reauthorize measure F and measure J passed by the voters, this includes costs for a communications consultant, a a community survey, putting the ballot on the county's ballot, there's a cost to that as well. As well as some analysis that we're doing right now, going to be doing in the near future with a consultant to bring council some options. We'll be incurring these costs one step at a time, so even when this, even if this entire two hundred ninety four thousand is allocated, there'll be future decisions that council's able to make before we expend all these funds.
So is this to upgrade, I guess, when was the last time we did an upgrade?
It's in the eighties, I think, can we collect about?
So we're way.
Seventies, eighties, yeah, it's been a, yeah, it's been a while, yeah, thank you, thank you. And we collected a little over three hundred thousand dollars a year and, and we should be caught, you know, if we modernized it, we'd be collecting somewhere in the seven figures, not the six figures.
Smart, thank you.
And with that, I'll turn it over for Deanna to go over the enhanced fiscal strategy.
So these are one-time dollars that we are asking for the council to consider. On a separate chart, you will see the fiscal strategy and it's broken up into a couple of key categories. There's the, what we're calling housekeeping of just better understanding what's the true state of the general fund with respect to where, where the burden may be on the general fund instead of other funds. There is housekeeping such as looking at the sixteen hundred contract due diligence effort that the council has already directed. Looking at workers' compensation review, our program, cost containment initiatives that we're putting in place, but may, may require additional study. We want to continue down the path of our overhead and see what our methodology is and see whether it needs to be revised as well as any other central service rates that we can offset. We need to go through our positions and look at expenditure allocation, what's not charged off in overhead rates, we want to make sure, just like the housing position, that every position needs to have where it's assigned its cost. And I don't think, I think it's probably been since nineteen seventy four, whether there's been a methodology to look at how each of these positions is being charged. That will further unburden the general fund. Looking at how our, how we're charging to our capital improvement program charges and our projects. So that we under, if positions can, are, are eligible, if they're working on a capital project, that they are appropriately charging. As well as another large endeavor, which is fee study. We want to look at the level of subsidy that the city is offering through fees as well as the methodology of how we are calculating full cost recovery. So there's two big components that come into the fee study, I'd like to break that up into phases. It's a lot to chew for the council if we take it one at a time, so I want to work to break it up into like categories and. So I want to work to break it up into like categories and begin to share that work in the fall of of this year.
I thought we had already done a fee study. Didn't we do a fee study, Matt, a couple of years ago?
We have done various real items related to fees. So in twenty twenty three, we did our annual, sorry, every five years, we look at our franchise fees, our sewer, water and waste collection fee, sorry, sewer and water collection fees. And so those were updated in twenty twenty three. This is a different, this study that is being talked about now is inclusive of all the fees that the city charges for our services.
So this is different in that we need a methodology of what do we, what is the methodology for deeming full cost recovery? Under the state law, we are permitted to recoup our cost for administering the service. That methodology, we need to understand what's assumed, what's captured and what's not. Then the council needs to make a deliberate decision and I'll I'll use parks and rec because that's generally where services are subsidized, just to keep fees low so that the community can enjoy the amenities and services that parks and rec provides. But the issue that I want us to really explore is when we are calculating a fee for service, are we capturing all of the port parts of the fee? The fee that finance and budget may have to participate in. It's not just the direct service, the fee that the city attorney's office may may have in terms of making sure that the fee is legal or it's portion of its review. Certainly, development fees, those should be full cost recovery service. And if any service that we charge a fee for is not cost recovery, it's not a decision that we make because of poor methodology. It is a decision that the council makes because it has decided to subsidize that fee with the general fund. And in in other cities that I've worked for, what you will find is that by poor or inadequate methodology, there's there's opportunities to increase those fees, right? But it's not a decision that you make because we did it wrong or we did it inadequately. It's because you were deliberate about those decisions. And I would say that that's what the housekeeping is about, is that there is a need for us to go through the organization as we've begun and it's yielded significant dollars and make sure that when we are charging the general fund or by position or by project, we are being deliberate about it. And I I want to tighten up and be cut and get this organization more disciplined on that. The other area that council member Chula began to allude to is we need an organizational assessment. Oftentimes, over time, where there has been many leadership changes and just over time as service changes and delivery of service changes. What you get is an organization structure that is layered on of different managers, supervise supervisors, managers, division managers, directors, and ultimately the city manager. And if you don't pause and say, where is, where are we with the organization and its delivery of service? Then the there are some organizational structures that you just can't explain, right? So this is, it's a time with the with the coming leadership changes that the council will indulge in is and and be lead as well as with the reality of the structural deficit. It's a good idea to look at our organization, its structure, the training assets of the organization and the deficiencies of the organization as well as our processes. We have some good technology implementation in flight that will bring about greater efficiencies. But we need to be deliberate in those kinds of actions. I don't, I don't think that we've we've, this is an organization that has put together some kind of framework or strategy of how it evaluates and modernizes its organization. I think it's a good time with respect to the changes that are coming at the fiscal reality. That's where we're going to get additional savings, additional efficiencies that council member Chua was asking for. But I would just say that between the housekeeping work and the organizational assessment, that's where that's what the fiscal strategy is, is in terms of right sizing the organization, right, training the organization, right, resourcing the organization and understanding the general fund from that perspective.
Thank you.
A little long winded, but it's a
Yeah, that does make sense.
And that takes experts, that takes some consultants, it takes some limited time, limited duration employees. And it takes experts to help us with regulatory issues, legal issues and best practices with fee study methodologies and things of that sort.
Thank you, city manager. Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, mayor. City manager, I know you enumerated and tried to explain this, this enhanced revenue strategy. The way I look at it is sixteen hundred contracts is you're trying to assess, you know, like I said before, assess what you can, what you can negotiate to reduce the the contract fee or what contracts you can terminate or or contracts that yeah, terminate, we don't need anymore, right? And then there's workman's comp compensation revenue. And you said about overhead revise, revision of overhead or positions over in the rates and C I P changes in terms of charges. To me, this are, like you said, housekeeping. I don't see anything there except for the, except maybe for, yeah, okay, I'll I'll take that. Then except for business tax modernization and enhanced revenue strategy. I don't see anything that is specific for revenue generation. That's my concern. We talk about a lot about expenditures, but we never go on the other side and talk about revenue generation. I would like to see something like there is an opportunity coming with the forty Niners Super Bowl and the FIFA. I think council member Lynn talked about this as well in previous meetings. We need to address that. How can we tap on in terms of revenue? This what this opportunities? And I don't see there.
Sure.
I don't see, I see a lot of expenditures cutting here, but I don't really see revenue generation in terms of immediate. And I'm disappointed.
Well, I I would ask for you to with the enhanced revenue strategy, that is an investment in revenue. The fee study alone should help generate additional revenue. Because there where you will see the fees, you will, we will understand them and there will be a greater degree of cost recovery. So that is an investment in revenue. The sixteen hundred contract due diligence that will that will generate some one time and some ongoing dollars based on what we do. Workers' compensation, it's not revenue generating, but it's efficiency. So it will bring back dollars that if if we look at methodologies in our program as a whole. Let's see, the looking at anything else on the list. The the key thing here is the the issue of revenue is, as I've stated before, it is very difficult for Oregon, for cities in the state of California to generate revenue where the categories are regulated by Prop two eighteen and several other rules. When you look at this sales tax, the city is pretty much at where it its level of sales tax is. So there isn't good space to move on that. When you look at the transit occupancy tax, we're at fourteen percent, what is, which is pretty comparable with the region, which means it would be difficult to go out and increase it even more. The business tax is the one that is the most antiquated and serves to to generate revenue if we could get the right balance. The FIFA and the and the Super Bowl, I actually charged our city team with coming up with a plan within sixty days. Because I know that this council has asked and wants to understand what's our framework, how we're going to work, where are the areas we could pull? Yesterday, we met with our outside consultant who helps us with forecasting. We talked specifically with them about how we can begin to model what the economic forecast will be. And we know that there's other organizations that are studying the same. And what what share could we expect from Milpitas with respect to our hotel rooms and other activity? That information, and I asked them to actually pool the college football playoff, which was a large event, as well as the last Super Bowl that occurred ten years ago, for forecasting information for modeling to see what did Milpitas get back then? And what was the, what was the pool of of opportunity? Because that will then help us forecast, what is it that we can anticipate by way of our one time revenue for these one events? As well as under, as well as understanding how we program that in. All of that to be said, the the goal is to have a framework within sixty days because I have heard this council ask. But we need the data, we need the data to engage in true economic forecasting. That is one time revenue. We want that, but we we also have to concurrently focus on ongoing revenue that will stabilize and really have a true impact long term on the fiscal sustainability of the organization.
I'm really glad because you answered my question, which is, you said, we are limited to revenue generation. We are limited in T O T, in hotel. We're limited and we're up to the sales, the sales revenue already. Yeah, that to me is a is a flag. Then we really have to unburden the general fund. And I don't think we addressed that tonight.
You, you have just hit exactly why this framework focuses. When you have no more revenues to sales taxes or T O T taxes to increase and you have a structural deficit and you have one bet, I've said it in this in in this in this group before, we have one shot, November twenty twenty six, for a ballot measure that is revenue generating before the the numbers continue. And when you've, when you've exhausted your other shots, you got to look inward.
Exactly.
What are we doing, what are we doing that needs to improve? And that's why the investment is housekeeping and organizational assessment.
I I don't doubt that.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
You hit it, right?
But I I agree with that. But I don't want to wait because right now we are in deficit in five years. I don't want to wait. I want to be able to address that deficit through unburdening the general fund. And the way I think you you're saying is, you know, the revenue side, you can't really do much, right? We need to look at the our expenditure. In terms of personnel.
Yeah.
That's the bottom line. And we can't wait. We can't address fourteen million dollars in in the next year or the next year. We need to address that now.
That well, that's, that's what the proposed budget, it puts to rest the three point one million. It allows for us to use our resources instead of looking at the three point one million to look at the sixteen million or the fourteen million, however you want to look at the end number. The 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 key thing, and I forgot my train of thought here. Oh, my goodness. The key thing is to use the time to initiate all of these streams that help protect the general fund in the next year so that you, once the ballot measure goes in twenty twenty six, you have a true state of where you are.
We can't wait. We we have
No, we can't wait.
We can't wait.
Oh, I know what I was gonna say. I know what I was gonna say. I I've said, I think I said this to you all on April first. And I had a PowerPoint that really had a key line in there. The three point one million is not your problem. It is the bigger twenty eight point five million. And if we, if we've, we've got to get this rested and get to the real work. The real challenge is the hard work of what's happening out there. And what we do today will have a direct impact over the next five years.
Exactly. So what I want to be able, what my thinking is, each and every one of the departments should look at their staffing now, not wait six months or one year. There's got to be a position or positions that we can do without. I'm being direct here because I want to address the deficit. Because we are counting on the my initiative, which is the business tax modernization. What if it doesn't pass? You know.
Well, it alone won't solve the problem.
Exactly. But what I'm saying, it compounds. What if, what if it's really hit us? We don't know what's going on in the tariff economy. I mean, we don't know that. We need to address it now while we have the time. We need to lower that fourteen. Thank you for lowering that from twenty fourteen, but still, that is fourteen million dollars that we need to address now in order to lower that. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna, and thank you.
Thank you. And I think, I think your plan is is on the right, you're on the right path. Because you have to spend a little money to make sure that we're doing everything right, correct. You're on the right path. Anybody else? We have a vice mayor?
All right, I'll try to be mellow, but I I have the same mind frame as council member Chua, right? And let's let's do it one by one. So there's a deficit and we have reduced it on the proposed plan, right? How did we do this? We did this on one time, we did this in recurring. And as I understand, you applied at the recurring and the one time this year same dollar amount as we go forward in the next five years of projection. That's why we have reduced it on the fifth year, we have reduced it on fourteen point eight, right? So so far, I admire everything that we are doing, trying to, you know, come up with dollars through housekeeping. I do not disagree with that. I do not disagree that we do have a need to improve and enhance our, you know, methodologies and and everything else so that later on, you know, maybe in shorter than the long term, we would realize that in dollar amount. What's lacking, and here's why I'm mellower than council member Chua, what's lacking is where are the other sources? Why are we not talking about the other sources, right? If you look at your projection, you know, the proposed revenues, right? It's from one fifty, I mean, one forty something all the way to one fifty one. There must be a mathematical science for that. Why you had projected that each year it has grown to at least one fifty one million? So if you're telling me that with uncertainties and whatnot, what formula did we use to calculate that there's increases in revenues, two, three, four million until the fifth year? So let's assume that that that's right, right? And it's feasible to conclude, I mean, to at least assume for now, that's what we are going to to generate as revenue in the next five years, right? Let's assume again that, you know, everything will be uniform, the one time and the recurring going forward. Then we have that fourteen point eight or sixteen millions deficit still. Now let's input uncertainties, right? All I'm trying to 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 find is with these circumstances, financial circumstances that we are in now, is it feasible to wait and see, do all the house cleans and what we we what and whatnot? And on the third year, when we start on your projection, that we start the structural deficit, are we able to catch up? I think that's the message council Chua is is trying to to implicate, right? Yes, we can address the first two years, but the rate that we are going now only through recurring and one time, would we be able to catch up? Because the uncertainty is what we're trying to bank on, it's the ballot measure in November of twenty twenty six. Another uncertainty is what happens if, you know, the tariff, you know, ninety days suspension of the tariff goes up? And these are uncertainties that we also have to account, not just by near guess, but a calculated analysis. If these things happen, the way we projected them, we still have this deficit on the fifth year. Yes, we held it off for two years, but on the two year, things happen. Can we catch up with the sixteen million? Here's my calculation, right? Again, I'm not good in math. We have two point six in recurring. We have one point six in one time, right? Assuming, hopefully, we pass the business modernization tax, we're looking at between seven hundred to three million, right? Realistically, let's put one million on it. Then we do more house cleaning, that's add two more million. That's only seven million on my count. We did all of this on the third year, we generate, we 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 did all of this, on the third year, we generate, we, we, we are going to, uh, supplement the next, uh, third year with seven million, but that wouldn't still be enough on the fifth year. We're still going to face the same fate, even if all our ideals and, and policies work, on the fifth year, we'll still have the deficit. So the question becomes, right? Is it prudent for this organization to wait uh, for the two years? Because you're, you're banking on, uh, the November twenty twenty-six ballot. You're banking on, uh, the realization of the enhancement, uh, strategy. And that timeframe is between one year and two years. So is it prudent, under what we have now, to wait for the two years and wing it later on if we still have time to address the fifth year, uh, deficiency?
Yeah, I, I don't wanna be mistaken in how we presented today. No one is suggesting that we wait for two years. What we're suggesting is that we have a solid proposal that does not impact services and it is ongoing. So you get the true credit of the three-point-one flow throughout. What has happened though, from my diagnosis of this organization with three weeks, is you have incredible and unknown systems that are burdening the general fund to an amount that we do not know. But we learned instantly that we could, we could attain what, about one and a half million, okay? That's a problem that this organization has to commit to doing. It's, it is, uh, it is frankly something I have not seen to this extent to find this dollar so quickly. And it's a reflection that there hasn't been organization or discipline within this organization about charging to the general fund. As a fiduciary, it is, it is ethical and it is necessary to do that work. The other is an organizational assessment. The, uh, let me get back to housekeeping. We don't have the resources inside this organization to do that work. It requires experts and it requires working multiple streams. I think I'm counting about ten streams at once to accomplish that quickly. That's why time is good right now, because we know that we have those two years. But no one's suggesting sit for two years and balance it later. That work has to pay off. The second is the organizational assessment. Between the lack and absence of revenue opportunities and budget structure, no one should be looking at that deficit and think that we can save services. When you've maxed out and exhausted your, your tax strategies of generating revenue and the uncertainty with the economy as we learn, right? We got a ninety-day window, but that's, you know, ninety days. No one should read those red numbers and think that this is an organization that can pause. That you have to be diligent in what you're going to do. We have to be, we have to underscore how important that business tax is and what, what we're gonna have to walk the line. And the next permanent city manager will have to walk the line is, how do you find something in economic uncertainty that's palatable for the businesses where they can support it, not fight against it? How do you find something that the voters will approve by statistically valid data when asked and, and polled the, the, the community? And what's politically feasible to get approved? And so we have to deliver that to you sometimes, as we begin to work, what the options are so that you can read the tea leaves. That's another enormous work stream that I don't see the resources in this organization to have. But they have to be done. And then it's the organizational assessment where we look at, how did we become this structure? Why is it that, you know, and frankly, I'll speak very candidly, I, I, you know, I've done nothing but that while I'm here. But how is it that there is no city manager's office except what's here right here? And I, and I will bet you, because it is so abundantly clear to me. The city manager ha, office has three roles. You support the council with its legislative needs. You manage the operations and the fiscal oversight and stay within budget. And you strategically plan for the future. There is no resource beyond us two to do that. And I can't, I'm telling you, I cannot do all of these at once. And I, and I just, it's, it's so clear, the resources do not live in this organization to do this work. And so that's why the organizational assessment needs to be metered. It needs to be, uh, strategized. And we need to put this all at once so that there is opportunity to look at what are the best decisions that can be made for this organization that keep the services that the community want, that make us disciplined around frankly, basic accounting and charging within this organization. And that, once and for all, clean up the different structures that have taken place over time. And then once you do that, build the resources so that it never happens again.
Right.
Build the strat, build the long-term strategic arm in the city manager's office so that it never happens again and someone is always looking at that in the future and the current state.
I'm on you with that and you will have my support for that, right? At the only, uh, 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 thing that I can say with your statement is, you know, we're doing this in a different time. If everything is good, you're right, right? Fix everything so that, you know, uh, this organization price. But the thing is, you know, we're doing this now and I agree with that on a different financial situation. So that, that's the challenge, right? So, and, and we will do that. And, and, uh, and how, when the house is clean and all these, uh, uh, recurring or one-time sources are defined, the question is, will this be enough to cover the projected deficiency? Is it, or it doesn't?
If it's, if it's not enough, then you will have an organizational assessment that tells you what to do and where to go.
Right.
And you probably will have that much sooner than the two years, because it, that just doesn't take that long.
Right, at that time, as I said, how, how much time to, uh, to, to clean the house? And when it's cleaned, then what's at the projected revenue or what's the projected dollar amount that we could calculatedly put into the deficit so for, so now we can decide, hey, it's way, uh, it's worth waiting for the two years. And here, right? At least I can speak on my one vote, right? Indeed, who wants to cut services and positions, right? But as a decision maker, you have to weigh things calculatedly. Is it the right decision to wait now? Or are there enough information and data on this organization that would give us the litmus, the, 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 you know, the indicator?
Yeah.
But even if we do this and wait for two years, I suggest that, right? We did all the, all, uh, all the, uh, housecleaning. We better our, our methodologies, you know, we do that based either by need or fiduciary, doesn't matter. At that point, we did everything. Are we still seeing that five-year projection? As I said, you know, I'll give you, uh, the, the, uh, November twenty-six ballot. That's realistically, that's about a million or two, right? Because between seven-hundred thousand to three million. I'll, I'll give you the recurring, the full three-point, uh, one million. I'll assume that it's going to go through all the way to the next five years. Uh, what, three plus one point, that's four million. I'll, I'll round it off, uh, to the highest number. And then, uh, what else is there? Let's assume that the efficiency, that the strategy, enhancement strategy produces another two million. That's still six million. Now, these are the higher numbers on what, the poly, what we are supposed, what we are, uh, expecting to realize on this, uh, you know, policies that we're developing now. So there's the question. We cut everything that we wanted. We have six million at the end of a year or two years. Then we go now to the start of the deficiency, the third year. Will it be enough with that four or five million, whatever we had after realizing all the efforts that we have now? Enough to cover the fourteen-point-eight million, uh, deficiency? Because if we have all this data and you tell us, even though we realize everything that we wanted now, we still have to look for other sources on the third year, then probably it's not right to wait.
No, no one is suggesting that we wait.
Then why am I not hearing suggestion to cut positions?
Because we have balanced this, unless you wanna overbalance the budget, which we can't do. But we have balanced the budget with ongoing dollars to the tune of three-point-one percent. The, the, there is more work to generate more general funds in, in the housekeeping category. And cutting positions should come at, through the organizational assessment work, right?
So if, uh, threading on what you said, we have balanced the first two, but this budget, right? Is that how we are going to address this, balance this? And let's see if we can balance next year and then we can balance next year.
No, 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 I, I can explain.
Right.
We have to balance the budget by state law before the end of June. And by, by June, uh, June thirty-first is the day. June thirty, thirtieth, or so thirty-first.
Right.
I'm making, I'm making thirty-first date, we're not gonna definitely have a date to do. Um, so by state law, you have to have a balanced budget. Concurrently, we have to come back throughout the year on many occasions to update the council of how this work is going and the dollar, the dollars that it's generating. So the work's not gonna stop. This, this is a city that's going to be involved in budget balancing and structural deficit many times in, in, over the next three to four years. This, this topic will be before you many times throughout the year. But what this gives you, unless you wanna overbalance the budget, it gives you the opportunity to meet, meet the state law requirement with ongoing dollars. And, uh, us, it allows for us to assemble the resources to begin the work under each of these categories. The ballot measure, the organizational assessment, and the additional housekeeping work streams. And then we will come together with the work plans. Uh, I was, I was ready to bring the contract, the sixteen-hundred, sixteen-hundred contract due diligence and the schedule of how we propose to get those three buckets ready to the finance committee. I wanna start putting those work plans in place for each of these so that there's transparency around what we're doing and when we're doing it.
Right, the mandate of the.
If you, in mid-year, if, if economic uncertainty hits, you guys would have the ability to provide more direction and send us off on, on, you know, what your feelings are about the work that we're doing and how you wanna handle any one of these work streams.
Right, as I said, you know, we're, uh, beyond, uh, requirements. We are not just, of course, you know, uh, we're doing this by, by June because we have to follow the law. But our obligation now, our mandate now is beyond just the requirement of the law, right? I, I, you know, if, that's the, 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 the only thing that I hear, no. What we want to hear, what the community wants to hear is, yes, we are trying to, uh, abide with the mandate that we have a balanced budget by June. But because of the structural deficit that we're anticipating in the next five years, we're doing the, we're doing, we're balancing this budget, not just because we have to, but we're doing this because we have to and we're considering the next few years. That, that's what, what I wanna, where is, uh, on that, uh, 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 chart? We see efforts, right? Oh, we, we all say it's uncertain tariff, uh, and, and whatnot. But where, where's economic development? Where is the result of the strategic plan? Why are we not incorporating that? If you tell me, uh, the projection for revenues, hey, uh, uh, council member, you know, the projections are based on the last five years of the economic development plan. Then I, I might, uh, uh, agree that, okay, let's enhance, uh, that, right? You know, we're talking about businesses, but on taxes, where are we going? Where in this would we try as a policy to increase sales tax, to increase T O T tax? I, I, I don't see it, right? Where in this I would, uh, say that, okay, let's go other sources, not just inside the organization. How about, you know, we have, uh, able staff to, to look for grants, to look for help, both federal and state? Where are they? All we're doing right now, which I am not saying that we shouldn't do, is in-house cleaning. Look at buckets where we can, uh, get money and then, uh, try to, uh, project that on the next five years.
Yeah. So, uh, maybe we head to the framework where that's, where that's at. I do have.
I know, waiting till after, uh, council member, vice mayor is done.
Are you there?
Okay.
Okay.
Councilmember, did you wanna say something, uh, the city manager?
I wanted to answer his question.
Yes.
Please. All right, so, um, I've already commented on, on the revenue and, and that we're very limited. This state law is very limited in how we generate revenue. Sales tax, and I don't wanna put our attorney on the spot here, but I'm going by memory. It, there are, there are caps to the sales tax amount. And I believe with the last measure, I, I don't know if, if Milpitas got an exception to exceed the amount or if it's at the cap. But we just can't increase the state, the sales tax at any rate. There, it's regulated by the state to hold it at a certain amount. And I'm just, they're not in so, and, and so it's important to recognize that as, as an option that, uh, is, I would just call it exhausted. T O T operates differently and that, uh, the region generally, you wanna compare what the re, what the impacted T O T, what the E T, T O T rate is to the region to understand what's the market for T O T.
I'll, I'll save you from that. I'm not talking about increasing sales tax or T O T tax.
Okay, I was commenting on.
I, I'm talking about, hey, we go to Great Mall, you know, everybody dances and hopefully customers comes and we generate more taxes on the same tax bracket. That, that, that's what I meant. That's why I mentioned economic development.
There was two other, and, and I will talk about economic, two other areas that, um, that I wanted to go into and I'll, I'll start with economic development strategy. I have asked the team to tell me, what is the return on investment from the economic, uh, strategy that was put in place? There were sixty-three initiatives and, um, the, there should be a measurable amount of return of what has, what has been, um, received from in, investing in the economic development strategy and implementing a great portion of it. I've seen some numbers, I, I, I wasn't satisfied with the methodology. And so I'd, I'd asked for them to go back and do additional work. So your question is right where I've already asked and, and staff has already provided me one draft of it. The second is, um, sales tax. And this is where, um, we, and economic development, this is where we should invite our, um, our economist and our third-party, uh, consultant that we used yesterday because it actually tells us the different categories of what's happening here in Milpitas and what are the larger areas of what have been generated. Not, not surprisingly, it was, um, refresh how I say this, building and, and, um, industrial space, right? So we, you know, you guys have a policy decision in front of you around, do we convert industrial space or not? It's actually one of your higher ranking revenue areas. So in terms of, you know, what we do is we're getting ourselves prepared in terms of future policy discussions around that. But I think, um, I've looked at the, to give you all a comparison of, of the numbers and, um, understanding why you can't look at these red numbers and say, we are, we are in a paradigm shift. This is an organization that needs to look at itself as changing for the organization that it will be in the future. Because if you look at the region that the Great Mall exists in, it generates about four million dollars a year, okay? So that's a good, that's a good contribution. But in order, if you look at these numbers, in order to cure with just economic development alone, you need four additional Great Malls in Milpitas that do not compete with each other. That's how, that's the enormity of what would be required by economic development to fix this problem. This is why, when the problem exists at this scale, this is why you wanna look at all of these work streams at once. Where, where to reorganize the organization? What efficiencies and improved cost allocations and expenditures exist in this organization? Revenue opportunities? And cost containment? But it, we just, there's areas that we just have to stop expending on. And it, and it, no, I just, I don't wanna be misunderstanding. No one is suggesting that we take two years. It's, let's get this ball rolling because time, while you have some time to prepare for the ballot measure, you've got, there's a lot of work streams that will, um, come with results for the council to make informed decisions.
Thank you. So we have now councilmember Deanne.
Yeah, thank you. So I agreed with everything, uh, to the city manager, the vice mayor and my dearest council member next to me. But what I wanna say is, we are now, um, having a balanced budget for the next two years. Looking at the third year, that could fix easily with that small, uh, deficit. And we haven't calculated, we haven't, um, really considered, really. We have not considered having that new. We have not considered having that new modernization tax, the business tax. We can do more of the housekeeping, what I don't want is for us to say, let's cut positions. It is not necessary at this moment, not necessary three years later. Do not spread it out where you're having staff thinking of, oh my god. And then the world is not there for them to continue doing the great work for the city. Why, why would we wanna put it there? There's also the reserve that we can also, you know, we can tap in. There's one-time fund available that we can tap. So with the fourteen point eight, I'm so confident that this can be fixed with the brilliant. Business tax, the reserve. You know, there are other revenues, like all the new projects in the pipeline. And we can, what we need to do is get it out, like issue permits as fast as you can. Now that we have the software, that it can get us through our days of work much faster, right? So those sort of things that we should look at and, and on. Not to say anything, but. Don't, don't, no, because you say positions cut, you know, there are positions that we should look at.
Let's, let's not.
Not uh, you know, let's not spread that out there because we need our staff members to, to be confident that we are in this as a team. We will, you know, put our hands on the deck and we will work through this hard time. One person cannot move mountains, but if everyone goes their sleeves up, we can move mountains. So that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you, uh, council member Lynn, so uh for myself, I do like your plan because you're, it's a balance. It's not slash and burn, you know, you're, you're doing, it's metho- methodo- methodological.
Methodical.
Methodical, there you go, it's methodical and, and you're gonna find out where are the deficiencies, where is there least improvement? It's not slash and burn, you're, it's, it's, I, I do like your plan, it's a good plan, so just uh, you know, uh, council member Chua.
Uh, city manager, can you explain to me when you say overbalance the budget?
So when there was the suggestion of why aren't positions cut? Is because uh if you overbalance the budget, that means we're pretty much there already where we have a surplus at the end of the year. We have a point eight surplus at the end of the year, which we're carrying forward for, for next year. So it means you've cut so much or you've generated so much revenue that there is extra. Your revenue and your, and your money that you have to expend is greater than the money that you actually anticipate spending.
Why is that bad?
It's not necessarily bad and we are overbudgeted right now with a surplus.
Right, so we can always put that in there, so, is that true?
It's, it's not bad, but it goes back to, what are you cutting? In this case, we are before you with a budget that does not impact services right now. And where the cuts that we are proposing have been deemed to have preserved the service level. The next round of cuts, and this is, this is, would have to be positions. Because we have no, we have no outcome yet on the work streams of where, of the work that needs to be done. So we've identified this, a certain list of work streams that exists that we know will generate or unburden the, the general fund. And so you would skip that and go straight to cutting positions.
When do you anticipate that to happen? And what factors would contribute to that?
So if you don't do it now. So do what now? At positions. So let's go to the bottom slide, so the bottom line here, as you see, we have point eight, I'm gonna put it up on my screen so, cause I can see it. We have point eight available. And that's a, that's uh, that's at the end of this year, we're proposing to carry that forward to address twenty-six, twenty-seven. The third year after is point nine, right? So that's nine hundred thousand and then thereafter it goes up back up to seven point one and, and then sixteen point three. So in terms of cutting positions, the, if the economy, if we go into recession and the economy does bad. If the ballot measure doesn't pass, or if any unanticipated event causes for our revenues to be less than our expenditures. That would be the scenario that you would wanna look at positions.
When is that?
I can't tell, I, I just, I just gave you the scenarios, I can't tell you when it will hit, it's a scenario.
Why don't we prepare for that? You know, the worst, I mean, you know, isn't that prudent to be prepared for, for something to the, what do you call that? I'm looking for the term, but I can't think of it right now. Um, yeah, for, yeah, prepare for something, being proactive. Being proactive, you know, instead of waiting for the disaster to happen, we're prepared to be there.
Yeah, you know, with all due respect, if you go to the um framework, I can't tell you a more proactive strategy than that. You're cleaning your house, you're finally getting the accounting done right and cost allocation and expenditure done right. You've already put in place cost containment, we have two, three memos out there on cost containment strategies. You're beginning the organizational assessment to understand how this organization has been structured under, under, over time. What its assets are, where its training deficiencies are, where it needs to upskill, as well as how it's been resourced and staffed and the structure. And then the bottom is you're putting a ballot measure in place, your one shot of a ballot measure before that year hits. I, I, with all due respect, I have not seen a more proactive strategy than that. There is uncertainty that none of us can control.
How long is this proactive strategy, do you think?
How what?
How long? Do you have a year, two years?
The work streams have to be put in place to understand the magnitude of the work. For, for example, I'm losing.
You might go in there and you'll find that instead of uh, instead of uh, a plus is a minus. That could happen when you do the house cleaning.
Instead of it being a plus.
I mean, instead of like you save or you look at something, a million, it's a million negative, not a million positive. That could happen when you look at your housekeeping, it could happen, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and if, if that were to happen, where it's, it's a cost to the general fund instead of a cost, uh.
Something else, uh-huh.
That is a violation of state law. If that means we are, that means that um, the enterprise funds would be, trying to get this right. The enterprise funds would be.
Was used for something else which is not supposed to be used.
Yes, you got it, you got it, I was trying, yes, that means that we're inappropriately in state violation, using enterprise funds. And you have to correct that, you have to correct that. So that's housekeeping, that's discipline, that's getting this organization cleaned up.
What I'm saying is, I don't understand why there is a hesitation. Of looking at the positions now and positions that we can do without. Or even, even repurpose some positions to where you need, like you said, you need, you need at least, for me, you need at least two people in your organization at the CMO level. Why don't we repurpose some of the positions that is not to, is not part of this uh, what do you call this? Fiscal strategy framework.
Yeah.
Repurpose some of the positions where we need them the most.
I, I'm so happy you asked that because I actually have, but I am actually looking at uh um net zero. Uh, request to how to repurpose positions, but to not have it to, so that we address our deficiencies that we've observed. But not have it impact the deficit. And so the, those types of changes, um, you'll actually see some of those by June third. But there, we have to do them in an environment like this where they're, they're net neutral to the general fund.
Yes, so I guess, yeah, and I wanna make sure that, that these um, that there's a balance. And that the public services, community services are not impacted to where our streets are going to be paved, puddles not being fixed, all that. That's really important, parks not maintained, that's, that's, right. Well, I think we need to move on before we start uh, is this it, the end of your presentation? Because we have to ask for public comment as well, but. We have more presentations, yeah, do we?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right, we have the council priority prioritization process that has funding.
Do you want me to, um, do you think we should do the?
I think the public comment on this section.
We can go pretty quick.
Public comment on this section, yeah, I, I think, public comment on this section.
Mayor, we've, we've already taken public comment, no, no. Yes, we've already taken public comment for the uh, public comment for a special meeting is only on the item on the agenda.
They don't want to, okay, alright, we can move on. Let's go ahead, let's go to the next slide, please. So this is our, this is, this is what we see, the, the proposed budget before you, this is going to be the impact. The structural deficit is deferred for two fiscal years, that means we have balanced budget for two fiscal years, even including the new proposals that we put before you. The funds new, it funds new proposals that are needed to stabilize services and implement fiscal, the fiscal strategy network. This is what we just had an extensive conversation about. It funds one-time proposals with one-time money. So that's important. Um, it reduces the structural deficit by forty-three percent within five years, which takes it from twenty-eight point five million to sixteen point three million. And then it is with minimal impact to services, so the levels of services will remain the same at this point. And at this point, no filled full-time positions adversely affected for now. So those are important points, so let's go to the next slide, please. So we've already talked a little bit about the fiscal strategy network and this actually is, we've already started working this out. So this is the level of detail that we've started talking about, this is, you know, uh, forgive me for putting an eye chart in front of you. But effectively, this is, we've already started working on many of these, for example, we have already issued and started a hiring freeze April first. So that hiring freeze, as, as this is demonstrating, is extended through December, to the end of the calendar year, and that can easily be extended. We're estimating, once again, that is not in the budget that we have proposed budget today, about an approximate one million dollars from that hiring freeze. That one million dollars is not in the proposed budget. It's not there because that's in FY twenty-four, twenty-five, when we're really realizing those savings and those will waterfall into our reserves. Okay, we've already have a cost containment memo out there that was issued May eighth, if I remember right. So that's already out there and we'll provide you more information. We are on different streams looking at over time, we're different streams looking at work compensation. So, and this is essentially starting to really build out and we will give you detail on each of these. And once again, if these are meeting discussions, we will come back to you, for study sessions, when there's particular inflection points, whenever we're talking about any of these. So whenever we need guidance from the council, we will come back to you. When we see our, ourselves in, in chat, when challenging organ, in situations, we will come back to you, this is not a one and done.
I, I'm going to ask, I'm asking Matt to find, or maybe Lou or Alice can find it, is the work plan for the due diligence on contracts? So that we can just give you an example of um, how we're trying to document what uh the return on investment will be with these work streams.
Okay, good.
Just so that for your information is when we talk about these work streams, an example of, we're looking at certain criteria and we're, we're trying to anticipate what the results will be.
Right, we have, we have asked that for that.
Yeah, it's, yeah, and I, I mean, I think it's important because you've heard me talk about, we don't know some issues, some important issues that this city has invested in without understanding what its return on investment is. Thank you. My battery's dead, so let's keep going while Matt finds it.
Um, these are the next steps, we are here at May thirteen, uh, twenty, two thousand, twenty twenty-five. Um, and our next action is to bring both the operating, proposed operating budget for adoption and the proposed CIP program for adoption on June third, depending on the guidance you provide us today. Um, and our recommendation is here, uh, we received a presentation which you've done, just done. Approve the FY twenty-five, twenty-six operating budget as proposed, including deficit reduction and FY twenty-five, twenty-six new proposals. And then approve the fiscal strategy framework to address the multi-year budget deficit. And with that, I'll turn it over to Matt.
Thank you, Lou, and so next week on May twentieth, we're gonna be in front of you for our quarterly council prioritization process. Um, and so there'll be more opportunity to talk about um, any new proposals the council has recommended during the announcement section after each council meeting. And council will have the opportunity to prioritize those new proposals similar to we do, that we do three to four times a year already. And so these next two slides are summarizing some of those items that are already funded or may need funding. We just wanted to make sure that those items that you have prioritized in the past or may wanna prioritize, um, those items that may need money in the future. Are part of this discussion and we're sharing that with you during this budget deliberation process to give you the opportunity to ask us questions. And or recommend potential um, funding for these items. I'll really quickly go down this list, this first slide is operating budget related priorities and the second slide is capital budget related priorities. The items on this slide are items that um, either need funding now or may need funding in the future to continue. And the, the first four items on this list under funded and proposed budget are funded in the proposed budget. Either through the business tax modernization proposal like we've already talked about. Or the next three items, the night market permit process and city job fair, all three of those items, um, existing funding has been identified to proceed with those in this calendar year. And, and then ongoing funding may or may not be necessary for those in the future and if it is, we would talk about that in a future budget cycle. The last six items on this list under not funded and proposed budget, planning commission stipend, and this is, this was a priority. And uh, as part of the prioritization process, it would cost an additional eleven thousand five hundred fifty dollars ongoing annually. If we can increase the stipend for planning commissioners from twenty-five per meeting to a hundred per meeting. We're currently not proposing that in the budget, but if um, it is something that could be discussed. The next item on here, city, citywide senior discount, we are still working on that policy work, we have briefings that we're starting um, tomorrow. Um, with some of you and then we will be briefing you over the next few weeks on this po, council priority to talk about options and alternatives to move forward. Local small business initiatives, we are still, you know, working on a number of angles here, we're working on some data analysis, looking at our business task, business tax license database compared to our procurement system. To see how we can make sure to optimize and the participation of, of our local small businesses in our city procurement process. Given some staffing changes, this had part, that analysis part of this has slowed down, but we are still committed to moving this forward. And the next three items on this list actually have not been prioritized yet, they're up for prioritization next week. But again, we just wanted to share them on this slide for your awareness, the bingo ordinance review, fentanyl policy, additional work and the community concert choir. Those three items, um, no funding has been recommended yet in the proposed budget as those have not yet been prioritized, but they could be prioritized. Based on the results of your discussion next week, next slide, please. This last slide here is the um, capital related, construction related prior, projects and council priorities that need funding. The first item on here, pickleball, uh, pickleball um, is also on the discussion for next week's city council meeting. We have identified an additional hundred thousand in the proposed capital budget already that has been discussed at a prior study session with the mayor and city council. Pending the results of your deliberation next, at next week's council meeting. The following items are, are not funded in the proposed budget, but each of them has a little nuance to that, so Main Street Police Office. We are looking at two streams here, one is we are looking at a potential, and we're looking at doing an RFP to turn our Main Street proper, South Main Street properties into housing. And as part of that, we are planning on bringing forward an option for council to consider placing a office for our police department in the future housing development there. In the interim, we have also looked previously at building out a substation at that site, but it was infeasible in the interim. But we now are looking at whether we can put an office for our police department there. I know our public works team was just out there yesterday analyzing it and we'll be following up more on that. and we'll be following up more on that to see if that is feasible in the interim, and if so, how much that would cost. The next two items, Main Street flooding and Main Street infrastructure improvements, these are partially funded. Um, and so, and Main Street flooding, we did study, fund a study last year, and that is ongoing, and there'll be a future capital cost that we'll have to look for money for to fix that problem that occurs every time there's heavy rains on Main Street. Main Street infrastructure improvements, we do have seven hundred fifty thousand from federal earmarks that we are working right now to identify um, uh, options for the scope of work. We originally asked for the funding for streetlights, however, that's not enough for streetlights, but our engineering team is working with the federal and state government to see if there are other types of projects such as pedestrian safety enhancements on Main Street that we can use that money for. And after we've finished those discussions with Caltrans on which options may be feasible, we'll bring that forward to council for consideration on, again, keeping that money on Main Street, but possibly using it for some physical improvements other than streetlights. Um, childcare conversion to community center, that is a, a large cost if we go down that direction. Um, and so we have not included that in the budget, but it's something we'll continue to, to look at options to enhance, enhance our childcare throughout the community. And then the Larry Leong and Matma Gandhi plaques, that item has not yet been prioritized. It is up for, it is up for. Okay. That, that item is up for potential prioritization next week.
Yeah, and that one, I'm going to go ahead and take that one off, because we're trying to save costs, I would rather put that money somewhere else.
Okay, thank you.
Some, some future date when we have better money. When our finances are better.
Yeah, I think we're, and that concludes our presentation, council.
Okay.
Question, Ms.
We have a council member.
So Matt, um, before Matt left.
Thank you, sorry, council member.
No, no problem. So the Black April for the Vietnamese community, I know that is not in here in the proposed budget. Renee, would you confirm that?
The special event budget is status quo from the current year, so there currently is money's funding all of this year's events, which includes Black April. There's changes to that budget that the city council would like to make, then they can give staff feedback.
I don't know how you do this, but this is the only uh ceremony for the Vietnamese community, so I'd like to have it happen annually.
Did you just confirm that it is in the budget?
Confirm that it's in the ongoing um, special events budget.
But that's not what Matt told me, and then he turned to you.
Um, it's part of the, I believe it's part of the current special event calendar?
I did, I asked for it last year, right? And then before this April thirtieth ceremony, before Matt left, he said, oh, council member Leon, he said, council member Leon, uh, we do not have the budget for April thirtieth, but we will make it happen this year, but that is for you to, you know, prioritize for the ongoing years. So I want to put it there now, today.
Thank you, council member Leon, thank you. Um, so when it was originally requested um, by yourself and the council approved it, the um, the line item was indicated as one-time funding, so we did offer it this year. Um, I apologize, I misspoke, if you'd like to add it again for this next fiscal year or indicate that you'd like it funded ongoing, there would need to be an action by city council, probably the amount of five thousand dollars.
Thank you, we noted that feedback.
Just add it up. Mayor. Council member Chuah. For the city council, uh, are you asking for feedback now on this one, like, like uh, council member Leon?
Correct, yes, yes, any feedback you have on the, these last two slides or any of the rest of the presentation?
The operating one. So I would like the community concert choir, the Milpitas Community Concert Choir to be ongoing as well, once we, you know, get approval. And also, every time I think, I want to add one item there too. Every time I think, you know, all the council members uh, go to an event, at least one or two parents would uh, would ask us, do you have any internship program for, for our kids? And one of the things that I would like to add is to have a, what I call MSCIP. It's Milpitas College Internship Program. Uh, because of the, the college students, they're in between, and it's hard for them to, to get a job. And it's also a good way to expose them to city governance. Well, I only had two interns, the current one and the last, the first one. And the first one, he was able to get a, a job. He, he'll graduate next year, but he already got a job to one of the big fives. And the parent told me that one of the reasons why his son got a job because of his internship here in our city. So, so I would like to encourage everybody, I mean, I would like to have that Milpita Summer Internship Program, um, College Internship Program. And I'm looking at at least ten for now, and each one of the departments can have an intern, it's going to be like during the summer only, like between eight to ten weeks. And, and I would like to formalize it, like it starts, the search will, they can apply from January, February, March, and then selection will be in April, because usually it takes about a month to do their background check. So can, they can start right away, like May, June, July, because they have to go back to, to their colleges after, I think, in August, or some of them early. So I would like that to be formalized and, and to be marketed to our residents, and also open to parents of this, um, parents who had college kids, the, the business owners here, and they have children, we can open it up to them as well. And also, I would like to look at the, the council members intern and look for adjusting their, their salaries, so. So those are the two. Twenty-five to twenty-seven.
I, now, do we need to take a?
Later, update later, because we have to do, council member Leon.
I think you should, since we will take this direction to fold it to the June third budget.
Before we take a vote, can I ask a question regarding the?
Vice Mayor.
So we have a priority set, are we just waiting for uh, the direction of the council, how much the budget for it? Or this is a, the part that uh, we can put more?
Sure, thank you for the question, Vice Mayor, so it really depends on the specific priority. Some items, such as a senior discount, um, we have not yet come to council with the um, with the recommendation and the exact dollar amounts. Um, some items, we do know, like the planning commission stipend, we do know the exact dollar amount. If we increased it from twenty-five to a hundred per median, that would be an additional eleven thousand five hundred fifty. So on the planning commission stipend, just as an example, if council wanted to provide that now during the budget time, would be the time to give us that direction um, for that. Uh, today would, uh, today, today would, just make sure, today would be ideal to provide the direction today, similar to a council member Leon mentioned on Black April, and council member Chuah mentioned on the community concert choir. Ideally, any budget-related direction you provide us that would need to be incorporated in this upcoming adopted budget would be given to us today. That way, we can quickly turn around a proposed, uh, proposed budget for your adoption on June third.
Thank you. Uh, so I have a couple that I'd like to request as well, but I'm wondering if we're going to be inundated with this. So uh, the MAP, Milpitas Assistant Program uh, for rental assistance, so I want to uh, make sure that there's funding for that.
Yes, council member and, and housing, acting housing official Sarah Balcha, on, there's, there's two programs that we have. Um, the first is the Rental Assistance Program, and Sarah and her team are bringing forward a grant proposal to council next week to apply for more money uh, from the state for our rental assistance program. And then that is different uh, from the Milpitas Assistant Program, which currently does have funding allocated towards it annually, correct, Renee?
Is, is that with the ARPA funding, or is that some other source? So what if we don't get that grant?
Uh, thank you for the question, so MAP, which assists with water utilities, recreation pro, uh, programs, et cetera, that is funded annually through the general fund budget. Uh, we're, we average forty thousand dollars right now. That's what we budgeted, a year, correct?
Is that enough, I mean, with the economic forecast that's?
We um.
And then, uh, from my understanding, you also turn away uh, much folks too, that don't qualify.
Um, we do, we do turn away people that don't qualify for the HUD guidelines. We do have a section in there that has temporary hardship, so if someone's going through hardship temporarily, we do make accommodations for those households. Forty thousand dollars is a slight increase from last year, so we've, we've anticipated an increase, usually about three to four percent, people that need the funds.
And Mayor, I also want to address your other question for the rental assistance, which is a different program. Um, you asked, what if we don't get those funds? Um, that is, that is, that is a challenge, it is a risk, uh, the rental assistance program. Um, we can allocate any amount to it, of course, but as half a million to eight hundred thousand dollars per year, we had been using ARPA funds previously. This last fall, we allocated money from the million and a half dollar earmark that Alex Lee's office gave to us a few years ago. Um, I think we still have some money left in that, so if we don't get this grant, we could go back to that source that is currently in our budget. But the, for the rental assistance program, ongoing in the general fund, it would be very hard for our general fund to support that, so we are hopeful and working really hard to try and get one-time grants and grant, uh, to fund that program so that we can continue to have that for our community to help, help keep people from entering homelessness.
And so if we don't get those funds, you come back to us and ask for those funds to come out of the general fund? Or some other fund?
Well, that's where you can start to look at ARPA, the ARPA dollars that the city has assembled, as well as other funds that you have that are in reserve.
Okay, you can use those funds, come back, okay. Uh, the other one is, you know, with Super Bowl, we've spoken about that. I'd like to create a position to just hone in on bringing in some uh, funding, you know, just go, just to make sure that we're, we're on board with all the other cities, that we're all partners, and um, I'd like to see some type of a position created just for that.
We will, in our sixty-day plan that I've asked for, we will include how we would use a limited duration resource for that.
Okay, all right, that's good enough. Okay, um, so did we want to take a vote on, oh, we have a council member Leon?
Yeah, I'd like to add, um, additional comment based on the MAP program. Um, I'd like the staff to uh, look into increasing the fund. Uh, currently, if I am correct, it's about twenty-two dollar plus on each household on the MAP program. Um, I'd like the staff to look into increasing that.
We can do that. Okay, so we'll go with the first one, that was a council member Leon that wanted to uh, uh, put it at April thirtieth.
For ongoing costs for Black April, funding. Uh, this is for consensus, Vice Mayor Barbie D O.
Aye.
Council member Chuah.
Aye.
Council member Lam.
Aye.
Council member Leon.
Aye.
Mayor Montana.
I am aye.
And the next one is uh, council member Chuah.
Concert Choir.
For Concert Choir, this is Vice Mayor Barbadeo.
That's fine.
Council member Chuah.
Aye.
Council member Lam.
Aye.
Council member Leon.
Aye.
Mayor Montana.
The next one is the MSCIP, Milpitas College Internship, I mean, Milpita Summer College Internship Program.
Vice Mayor Barbadeo.
What did you say?
Said I'm fine.
Council member Chuah.
I'm fine too.
Council member Lam.
Say.
Council member Leon.
Aye.
Mayor Montana.
And I'm an aye.
And then there was one more for increasing council intern salary. Review. I, I think what we'll do is we'll broaden the range. We'll broaden the range for, for expertise and for within the internship for the, for the youth, the college students, so that there's more wiggle room. Is that, is that fine?
Is that your last one? Okay, so we have a council member Lam, yours?
Sorry, please the amount uh, for the MAP program for each households?
Yes.
Is that?
Kind of what we were talking about.
Oh, which?
For water subsidy.
Yeah, the water subsidy, yeah.
Do you have a comment, city manager? Is it to increase the amount per household or to increase the funds? Are you talking about eligibility or changing, no, you're talking about increasing the forty thousand?
That's right.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Uh, calling for consensus, that's going to be Vice Mayor Barbadeo.
I'm okay.
Council member Chuah.
Tomo, no, Tomo, so, but it's same as an aye.
Council member Chuah.
I'm okay too.
Council member Leon.
Aye.
Council member Leon.
I'm sick. Yes.
Mayor Montana.
And I am an aye.
Just for clarification, the police uh, office, that's on there, so you don't, we don't need, it's already been voted on to prioritize it.
It's already been voted on to prioritize, and we're definitely planning long-term on including it as an option in the RFP, and council will have another discussion on that when we bring the request for proposals for future developers forward in the fall. We are looking at the costs for a temporary renovation in the interim. Um, and what we can do is we can, yeah, we, and then so that money for the temporary renovation currently is not in the budget, and we don't currently have a cost estimate for that, I don't know, Christian, if you want to, how long do you think it would take us to get some estimates together for that?
Probably several weeks, so I, I, staff and I visited the, the both properties. Uh, the, the one facing South Milpita, South Maine uh, is, is more of an option than the other one. The other one was leaking excessively.
That's the one with the roof collapse, the ceiling collapses, no, I'm not talking about that one, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the one that um, right across from Liberties.
Yes, so I, I would have to get um, probably some, some structural expertise to come out and assess. All of the utilities were off, so I can't, I can't speak to what is functioning inside there, uh, but we would need several weeks to assess that.
Yeah, and remember, this is, it's just a small space, not the whole building.
Understood.
And it's just so the officers can go and write the reports, use the restroom, and just have, just show police presence in the area. That's the main thing, it doesn't have to be a Taj Mahal, doesn't have to be anything fancy, just, you know, something simple.
Understood, there, there were um, safety concerns, uh, there was rotting of the access, access gates. Uh, and there were structural concerns as well, and again, I, I can't speak to if, if it's the electric. And there were structural concerns as well. And again, I, I can't speak to if, if it's the electrical system or plumbing system is even operational. So that would have to be assessed.
Okay, all right.
Uh, Mayor, one last comment.
So we have a council member Leanne.
Yes, I wanted to put this on the radar of the Sunny Hills Apartments, those low income section eight. I, I don't know if we have. Plans if the section eight is terminated to help those tenants there at Sunny Hills Apartments.
Thank you. We can follow up on the status of that unless Sarah has anything to add at this time. We'll follow up and get you an update on that.
Thank you.
Is that it on that? So. City manager, city manager. Let me put, yeah, this is, we can go back and look at the work plan as I had referenced if you want. Or we need, we do need some direction in terms of what to bring forward on the third. Now that you all have added from the council priorities perspective, because our attempt is to bring forward a budget to begin. The requirements of getting proper action and things of that sort. So do we have a recommendation slide or do you guys want to walk through the, the sample of the work plan or? What's the pleasure of the council?
Yeah, just walk through it.
Work through it. All right. So this is, this is a contractor diligence work plan that we had prepared for.
But I'm city manager?
Yes.
I, I think someone, someone is asking for a quick break.
Oh, I'll meet you. Pleasure at the council, whatever. Do you want a break?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
All right.
Okay, how many minutes you want? Five minutes. Okay. Bathroom break.
All right, thank you.
We will adjourn for, give a five minute break. Oh, yeah, I'm gonna go finish that. And we left off with, I'm so old, city manager saying something.
So we had prepared for an upcoming committee meeting, a sample work plan for the contract due diligence. That I think is a good case study to focus on in terms of some of the conversation that we had here. And so while they bring the chart up, I will make it available in the portal for, for council information. But this is a great example of how we have to tackle the problem. So let me just tell some, give you guys some information before we look at the work plan. The city has sixteen hundred contracts that it was able to assemble manually. Because we wanted to, the council directed us to look at our contracts and determine whether there's any cost saving opportunities in these contracts. However, this could have been a very easily assignment had the city invested decades ago in a contract database. And we could have gotten an AI bot to go in there and help search and produce reports and things of that sort. The world is using AI for this type of information. However, for lack of investment in a contract database. We have to go through each of them manually until we're going to engage, Lucian I had talked about to try to overcome this problem. Is with the Tyler system that we have, we have to engage staff in the organization to self enter the contracts. So that we can concurrently create a contract database, a simple tool, very reasonable. Every city should have this. We do not. So that work needs to happen, like many of these other work streams, you identify what's the problem? How did we get this bad? And where do we go from here? Then we have three work phases. The first phase is what contracts are not in use. They have dollars encumbered. And so we covered appropriately. We want to set criteria for how we look at that, right? So that everybody in the organization knows what would fall under not in use. And if they're not in use because of the service scope is outdated, it's not being used or the, and the contract has funds encumbered and we can liquidate. We want to move then to keeping that in that phase and then going into what we get. What are the outcomes? Why is this a good thing to do? Reduce the number of contracts, assemble one time funds for releasing the contracts. Good housekeeping practice. It keeps our database clean, right? Which is a discipline that we'll have to take forward. And we'll establish an annual routine to do this as a, as just good hygiene for the organization. What we want to get to you by the fall is the number of contracts that we can close. And the amount of one time dollars that are made available by fund. So if there's some will happen in enterprise funds, others can happen in general fund. The second part to this work plan, you have to remember we're, we're moving the whole organization. It's not just, you know, an analyst sitting at a desk. What caught, what contracts are in use? What contract is actively being used? It aligns with the services and the priorities or legal requirements and the contract is funded. So this is an ongoing cost to the city. And so we'll want to review the contract for three different outcomes. Whether there's, we should make a request to revise terms. I think we've had a really good result from trying this this week. I think we just saved about two hundred and ten thousand dollars for the city. I'm looking over here because they've done great work this week. We reduce pace of expenditures so we can slow down on the services provided if it has no legal requirements. Or we keep as is and no change. We deem that it's right, it's right, it's a good contract. We don't have to make any changes. This phase category, we want to come back to you in winter twenty twenty five. And we would come back with the number of contracts falling into this outcome. And the amount of ongoing dollars through revising the contract or slowing the spend on it, how much ongoing dollars are created. The last phase is nice to have, and this is being, being aware and, and recognizing that Milpita is unique. There's things that the community wants and that's important to keep within the organization. And so these are contracts that don't necessarily relate to service delivery, but they're special to the, to the organization or to the community. That we want to make sure if they fall in this category, that we understand whether there's items that are nice to have that don't really. That we don't really carry forward going forward, or whether there are some that you would potentially make a decision. You know, it's just nice to have that we still want to do it, right? Some of the issues came up today and some were removed. This too will generate a combination between ongoing dollars if it's, if it's funded reoccurringly or one time funds. And so we want to come back, we think that category is smaller and we want to come back in winter as well. So these are the types of work plans. We want criteria for everyone to understand what the goal and the outcome is and when we report to council. This is the type of work plan that we were going to present to the finance committee. But we'll do this for all the other work streams that we talked about. So there's transparency around it. And particularly come to the right committee or come to the council at the appropriate time to report out. That's it.
I, I love it. I'm so glad that you're really focused and analytical and really. I, I love it. I'm so glad that you're really focused and analytical and really, you have a great plan. So is there any, are there any questions for city manager from anyone? We have Councilor Chua.
I like how you attack the, the contracts. Chris Mayer and I have been asking for this, I think, two years now. And finally, something, something tangible you can see, and thank you for that. And, and I do like the way you, you fiscal strategy framework, please. And it, and I think for me, this sums it all up, our strategy for fiscal. Sustainability, sustainability, my. It's, it's, you know, start with housekeeping, of course, housekeeping, cleaning up, what? It's cleaning up, it's really looking at the data, whether they're real or not. That's what, to me, is housekeeping. And that's really the foundation of a good fiscal strategy to make sure the data is correct. Fiscal initiatives and revenue, I like, like the, the, looking at the positions, the, the charges. Are we charging the correct project? Are we charging the correct department? Or any, is anybody charging anything? Or are they just charging the general fund? Which is misleading, because we cannot see the true picture of the general fund if we're all charging the general fund instead of a specific project that we're working on. So the engagement, I like the organizational assessment, because looking at our deliverables. What did we promise the, the residents, the businesses? The assessment of our service delivery? Or can we sustain it? Or can we, can we look at, can we look at something that may be nice to have, but we can't afford? You know, what are the basic needs that the, the city requires us to do? Of course, public safety and amenities, good quality of life. That is good organizational assessment. And part of that also is the, the staffing assessment. Do we have the right people? Do we have the right amount of people? And like you said, in the CMO, that's the two of you. I've never seen that before, myself, being a corporate world. There should be some business analysts and admin support, and I agree with that. Cost containment, looking at all our fees, are fees reasonable, our fees? I, I look at, when I proposed the business tax, tax modernization. I look, I asked someone, I said, how much tax do we get? And it's around that three hundred thousand. That's nothing, that's just to sustain or maintain the tax, tax delivery. I mean, it's even, there's no benefit to the city. I said, why are we doing this? We need to review this tax modernization thing, because it hasn't been changed since nineteen seventy four. And I checked with my friends at, you know, the mayor Palo Alto, mayor of Santa Clara. And I said, how did you guys do it? And they explained it to me, and I said, it's about time to do this. So, so I like that. So I think, like the mayor said, and everybody else said, we're on the right track. But we need the timeframe. And I'm looking at you, city manager and assistant city manager. And you told us sixty days, sixty days, what is that sixty days? What is the sixty days for?
I've, I've asked, I've directed staff to come back with a strategy for revenue. Seize, seize some revenue from FIFA and for the Super Bowl. So look at our, look at our restaurants, what partnerships can we make with them? Understand what our hotels' plant activities are, and where are there partnership opportunities that could just get Milpitas out there? I even asked for a focus brochure, I understand the city created a brochure for Milpitas in general. I said, let's make a separate brochure that is just targeted for these two sports events.
So I'm looking at my personal preference, I'm looking at mid-year, twenty, you know, by December, when you guys come to our budget budget. I'm looking more a solid plan on looking back and what did we learn from all this fiscal strategy framework? So we can look forward and do our next fiscal strategy framework. That's why I'm giving you time until the end of the year. I think that's ample time to have a solid fiscal strategy framework, that's my position. And thank you so much for all the hard work, all of you. I appreciate it, I know it's not that easy, but we have seen a lot of tangible things that we can really grasp. And have some idea, you might not know where we're going, but there's some kind of a map to get somewhere. So thank you all for all the efforts, and thank you Luz for your leadership in finance, and everybody. I know everybody worked hard, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, and we are heading in the right path. I'm very confident that we have a really good leader to lead the city in the right direction. And with all the, with Matt and all the staff, making sure that, you know, because we're all in the same, we're all in, we're all in the same boat. So we're doing everything we can to stay afloat and not be another Oakland. Because they, they are in deep trouble, and we don't know what the economy stores, is in store for us. So with that, do we have anything, do you have any other announce, any announcements, city manager, Matt?
I, I want to make sure that Luz got the action that she needed to proceed with. That's right here. So we have three parts here that we'd like for the council to consider. One is you to receive our proposed operating budget, the presentation. You approve the operating budget as proposed, including the changes that you made for council priorities. And the framework that we've presented. And that we come back while you approve the fiscal strategy. And then we come back to address the multi-year deficit, and then we come back on June third, which is where the planned additional consideration.
A motion or just the consensus?
Before the motion, I would like to add something there, I don't know where it's at, but you can. Whatever staff you need, you can go ahead and hire. I think you need the personnel to make it successful and effective in a short amount of time. So go ahead and, I'm.
I think it's already in your plan.
Is it there?
Well, I'm, I'm going to bring some action on June third that would be folded into the resolution, and I, I want to present it net neutral. So.
Oh, good, okay, good, yes, I want to clarify.
So the agenda only had provide direction on approval of this. And so we can take consensus on your approval, but we would not take a motion at second.
Okay, so is there a consensus? We'll start with Councilmember Leon.
I, yes. I'm good.
Councilmember Chua?
I, yes, I'm good.
We have a council member, Lam.
Hi.
We have Vice Mayor Barbara Diouf.
Says you started something, so I, yes, I'm good. Okay.
And I, and I'm definitely, yes, like, yes, we're in the right direction, going, moving to the right direction for our city and for our residents.
Can I just say something before the motion?
Yeah, you can say something.
Right.
It's not a motion, it's just consensus.
Later on, because somebody's going to motion for.
There will be no motion, Vice Mayor, that is not what was noticed on the agenda.
Okay, then my thoughts will just be my thoughts then. So, you know, I understand, everybody's working so hard and we have a common goal, right? Reading aside blessings, praise and accolades, what we need is a firm, objective and calculated decision-making, right? That partakes appreciation of what's in front of us, the reality. And I hope that this council will vote based on, on those three principles. And not just to satisfy a certain demographic, or not just for personal thing, but objectively as a whole. Economic times are very challenging, as we know, there are factors that we cannot control, like the federal and whoever's sitting up there. Secondly, we have regional situation, right? We did have studies about property taxes and sales taxes recently. It's not looking good, coupled with what's going on nationwide. And of course, as our mandate is to make sure that, you know, we take care of the community. Because as a good decision-maker, every, everything has to be considered. If it is something that is not feasible going forward, if it's something that, you know, caters for a consideration. Such as an opportunity to wait and see, I hope that that's how we decide going forward in approving this budget. The only concern that I have is, and I, I trust staff, and I trust the new leadership. Is that we're doing all of this, and at some point, things becomes irreversible. And all the efforts that we're spending now should have been spent the other way to better the forecasts in the next few years. So as we go forward and when we approve that budget, I hope that we have that in mind. Let's not pause for a firm and stern decision if it needs to.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, and do we have any announcements from the council? If not, this meeting is adjourned.
I have an announcement.
Oh, okay, go, city manager. Well, thank you first of all for all your due diligence on, on the budget. It, it means a lot, because the input that you provide helps us become better at how we approach the, the problem. I want to just incredibly thank the team personally, I know Luz has thanked the team several times. But it's important that they hear this from me, because they are the ones who prepared all the work for me to come in and, and help refine. While we've made incredible progress, and I think I shared with one of you, I think it was Councilmember Chua. I don't think any other city manager has brought a deficit down by forty-three percent in less than a month. And so let's, you know, let's keep on that momentum, we know it, I think we're all prepared and aligned to keep that work. So thank you for, for the comments and for your, your robust discussion. And I would not be satisfied unless I had an opportunity just to share that we are going to be bringing this back next Tuesday. But this week, from May eleventh through May seventeenth, is National Police Week. And I think it's important to mention while it's happening, because the twentieth, while we're present, it will be after the week. National Police Week is meant to honor and remember fallen officers that were killed in the line of duty. In nineteen sixty-two, President Kennedy issued the first proclamation for peace officers Memorial Day and National Police Week. And so I just think it's important to pause, because for any city manager that has, has years, many decades of service behind. It, I have never lost on the fallen officers and the work that they provide. And it, it means a lot when we can recognize our officers in this matter, but thank you.
Thank you, and I think the sheriff's, I think the sheriff's department has something every year, right? Thank you for everything. And with that, this meeting is adjourned, thank you so much.